Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can everybody speak up at once? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call some county council regular meeting for Tuesday, January 21st. Let us all please stand for the invitation and raise your hands. This big week is given to the invitation.
Let us pray. Our dear kind of people, we ought to be to thank you for allowing us to come together to do the people's business again. We invite your presence and ask that you just abide with us and help us to conduct our meeting the way you would have us to conduct it. We ask your presence upon everyone who is present. We ask that you continue to bless our city, county, our country, and the world. We ask that you go to those places that are uneasy and are experiencing unrest. We ask that you be with those who have been affected by COVID-19 and all of its variants. We ask that you be with those who have lost loved ones and those who are still seeking struggling. We just ask that you pull them through and help them to restore to good health. And as we go through every item on our agenda, we ask that you give us wisdom, understanding, and help us to do the things that you would have us to do in love and peace and understanding. These are all places we ask and thank in the precious name of our sake. Amen.
Amen. Read this information before we proceed to pledge.
Retired U.S. Army Veteran Robert Dix served our country for 25 years supporting Desert Shield, Desert Storm, and Operation Iraq Freedom with a combined total of six years in combat. He is a 1981 graduate of South Carolina State College. He is currently a member of the American Legion Post 202 and a volunteer track coach at R.E. Davis Middle School. Also, Mr. Dix is a member of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church of Sumter where he serves as a deep end. He has been married to his beautiful wife Lily for 42 years, and they have two sons and two grandchildren. He currently lives in Council District Number Four.
Please place your right hand over your left breast. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we appreciate your bringing from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we appreciate your bringing from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we appreciate your bringing from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you think there may be any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, would you mind moving up the item where it says, um, to the officers for their recognition? That we could do it right after the approval of the minutes.
Sure.
And the new business, um, we need to add the audit. And if you'd like for them to go right after that, that would be fine.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Move by Mr. Eves, seconded by Miss McGinnity, that we make the changes to the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any none? Changes to the agenda are approved. Have a motion to approve our minutes of a regular meeting for January 11th and a special meeting for County Council also on January 11th. So move, chairman. Move by Mr. McGinnity, seconded by Miss McGinnity, that we approve the minutes for those two meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Come now to recognition of Corporal Matthew Barwick and Corporal Bradley Hines for receiving the Medal of Valor from the South Carolina Sheriff's Association on January 20th, 2022. Chair, members of County Council, it is a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize and honor the few of our own. And that's Corporal Matthew Barwick and Corporal Bradley Hines. Put them on board, please.
Familes are here and, uh, of course, on the last week, January 20th, they were honored at the South Carolina Sheriff's Association with the Medal of Valor. Whereas, um, gentleman was attempting to commit suicide, the, uh, gentleman was on a ladder and, uh, hanging from a rope. He kicked the ladder from underneath him, and these two gentlemen responded just in time to, uh, prevent that. And for their heroic act, again, they were awarded the Medal of Valor. I think, um, when it says a lot about, you know, saving someone's life, again, they acted very heroic.
No, I just wanted to, yes, thank the Sheriff's Office for putting us up for this. I mean, this kind of things, we don't do this for recognition, obviously, or for money or anything like that, but it's always nice to get recognition for something like that, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd say to what, uh, C. Corporal Barwick said, we appreciate everything, uh, that the county has done for us in the past, that the Sheriff's Office did for us for this, um, and we're just blessed to have been able to be in the right place at the right time and just did our job the way we should do our job and then somebody's life may have lost.
Your families are here, I ask that the family, that the family would stand, please.
It's always going in today's world of law enforcement and the way we, uh, have these challenges, it was certainly without hesitation that they responded. Again, this gentleman was hanging from that ladder, um, one of them grabbing the other one, attempted to pull it to untie the rope, was unable to do so, because we actually had to cut the rope, and, um, but there again, um, gentleman was very appreciative himself. I think he realizes now that he didn't want to lose his life. Again, thank you, gentleman. Thank you. We're proud from the Sheriff's Office to say that they're one of ours and continue to do good work. I commend you. Thank you, constable, allowing us to do this. And we're proud of, you know, behalf of County Council, I want to give you your due thanks. Give us our appreciation for your heroism. Thank you for your service. Thank you for serving the citizens of Sumter. Okay. You do more than that, you know.
Wow.
The chair, can you get a picture with them holding it, sir? You can actually see the, this is a picture.
You can also get a picture without the mask.
If somebody can hold my leg, we can see it. This is the chair. The justice, yeah. They have these in the yard. One on your side.
Thank you. Corporal Barwick and Corporal Hines, you and your family is one of these this time, just by two, you don't have to stay up all the whole year. In any way else, wishing that you can leave this time, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. As per the instructions of changing the agenda, we now have an audit review for Mr. Chuck Towler. Hello again, Mr. Towler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. Um, I'm Chuck Towler, partner with Wes Rogers. Uh, earlier today, I met with the Fiscal, Tax, and Property Committee to give a detailed, uh, report of our audit, and, uh, we have completed our audit as of and for the year ended June 30th and 21st, and I'm happy to report that it was a clean, unmodified report. Um, I also want to thank, uh, the administration and finance staff specifically for the assistance that they provided us in this process. And, um, unless there's questions, um, I know times of essence, so I'll leave with that.
Thank you. Thank you for that report.
Thank you for getting that.
Okay, aisle number six, man use matters. Ms. Rue. Welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, the first man use matter on the agenda this evening is RZ 2124 at 601 Pitts Road. Uh, the request is being brought forward by destination based by LLC, and we do have the applicant here to speak on behalf of the request. They are the authorized agent for the property owners, they are seeking to purchase this property. It is to rezone approximately 5.8 acres of land from residential 15 to agricultural conservation. Uh, it's a fairly large tract of land located just north of Bay Springs Road on the east side of Pitts Road. It is currently zoned R15 as is the bulk of the property in there, uh, which is primarily residential development and then some large acreage tracts. Historically, as you can see in the real photo, there is one building, um, on the property. Uh, it's always historically, as far as we can tell, been used for some sort of non-residential use. Most recently, it was used as a religious institution. This property has been on the market for a significant amount of time, uh, but the R15 zoning designation makes the sale of this property, um, a little bit difficult because with the R15 designation, there are very, very limited commercial activities that can go on it, uh, primarily the previous use, which would be a church use or some sort of public use. As you can see, it was the Victory Full Gospel Church. Uh, they have since relocated to a new location and they've marketed this site. The property itself is actually influenced by two Carolina bays. Um, the building is built on the high point of the property. In 2015, this map panned out to be almost completely accurate. This section of Pitts Road was impassable. Water sat full on the front of that property for several days. I don't know what the status of that back bay was, but I'd imagine that it was also holding water through that process. So I'm fairly confident that this map is correct, which further limits its practical reuse for more than one residential use or for its existing single commercial style building. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the comprehensive land use plan designation. In this particular instance, the property is influenced by both the suburban development planning area as well as conservation preservation. Because of the existence of the floodplain on the property and some probable wetlands, rezoning this to the least intense district that it could be designated to that could allow some possible commercial reuse would be the agricultural conservation district. Based on the existing pattern of development on the property, the amount of acreage, staff does find that rezoning this property to AC is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. A planning commission does recommend approval of this request. We do find that it's generally supported by the comp plan, and it has been improved and historically used for commercial uses. Uh, I would like to add that it is our understanding that the applicants would intend to open a special events venue in this location. As council may recall, at the end of October of last year, we did adopt the very finite review criteria for special events facilities, which we make them a C-300 use in this district. So even if this property is successfully rezoned to agricultural conservation, it would not be a by right use for their proposed use. They would have to go through additional review criteria, which does involve reaching out to property owners within 300 feet to get their, uh, letters of consent. Have you answered any questions that you may have? And we do have the asking, thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Rue? This is the second reading. Council, take action on second reading immediately after public hearing. I now declare a public hearing open for RZ 2124. Anyone wishing to speak or are against the rezoning of this property, please proceed to the podium. State your name or the record.
Um, I'm Brooke Brazwell. I'm one of the partners person of property, and we appreciate your time and duration with this rezoning, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Brazwell? Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else wishing to speak, please?
Um, I'm Debbie Branson. I'm, uh, off home in, um, I live right behind, um, I don't actually live right now. My mother's lives right off of Bay Springs, which, the, the church is, is, um, right off of Pitts Road, and then there's, um, some woods and then, um, some trees, and then Bay Springs is right there. And I, I just don't like the fact of having it agriculture. Everything around there is residential and just the fact that livestock could be on, on there. I just think it would depreciate that, um, the homes in that area. And I don't like the fact that maybe there'd be cows and chickens and whatever else possibly in that area. So I'm, I'm just opposed to getting it zoned for, for, um, for, um, agriculture.
Ms. Rue, you want to address that?
Yeah. Actually, in the county zoning ordinance, every zoning district allows agricultural uses by rights. So today, with the R15 entitlement, it could actually be used for agricultural purposes to include the keeping of livestock. There would be setback standards which applies across the board for the structures that they would say is, but rezoning the property from R15 to agricultural conservation would have very minimal impact on its ability to use for agricultural purposes.
So you're saying, um...
They can do that now.
That it can do that way now.
Okay. I didn't know, um, yeah.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jimmy Sanders, and I own property right next to the property that's being discussed at the moment. Uh, I, I share somewhat the views of the lady who spoke just before I did, and I understand from her comments and the other comments that they have what they write. The owner would have a right to use the property for agriculture and whatever purpose. The only thing that I'm a little concerned right now in addition is the special, the facility, talking about use for facilities, special events. I'm not quite clear on what that means. And so if I can have some understanding of what that means, that would help me a lot in terms of...
Ms. Rue, you will address that as well, please?
It's my understanding that they would like to use the facility for a wedding venue, birthday parties and such, but Ms. Brazwell may be best able to plan what they envision from the property for.
Yeah, so it would be a, a hall somewhere to build a Donald House and raise a lot of species in Sumter, so...
So the plan would be to, to take down the current building or use that building?
No, we're not. Ms. Brazwell, what you thought about worship that you reported?
No, we're not removing the building or taking it down. We're going to renovate it. Yeah, so we're not planning to add any structures or necessarily mess with the structure that's there other than renovating the inside and outside.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I would like to, I mean, I've been here all my life, and that's what J.C. Hill, what?
It was the line.
Limes, Limes, Limes. I was a young boy when that property was sold to... Like, what, 25, 30 years?
Yeah, so the history of the property is basically the same.
It might actually appreciate your property.
Yeah, I think you're, yeah.
Versus a Quaychamp.
I'm not quite sure about that, but, uh, thank you very much for listening to my comments, but, you know, just registering a little concern, and because, uh, that property, uh, I'm very familiar with the property. I was born there and I grew up there, so...
But if you heard, Ms. Rue, before they can proceed, they still have to go back to the planning commission where you'll get a chance to, to voice.
That would be very, at least 300 feet.
Right.
You will...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Anyone else wishing to speak? I now declare the public hearing session closed. Move for approval, second. Goodbye, Mr. Eves, seconded by Mr. Bird, that we have second reading on RZ 2124. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? They say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Second reading is approved. RZ 2122, Ms. Rue.
There have been no changes to this request of second reading.
Move for approval, second. Goodbye, Mr. Eves, seconded by Mr. Bird, that we have third reading on RZ 2122. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Third reading is approved. Come now to a presentation by Ms. Kayla Washington and Jay Berkeley.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to present this presentation to you today. We come to you on behalf of the South Carolina State Secretary of Department of Veterans Affairs, Mr. Secretary William Wrenslay. You come on behalf to exactly take your intent. Um, our mission of South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs is to lead, enable statewide coalition of partners to create a sustainable environment in which veterans and their families can thrive as valued members of South Carolina community and the nation. Uh, we do this by assisting their families in obtaining benefits which they are entitled to, um, integrating all the efforts of the state to provide a service for veterans and their families, advocating for the veterans and military installations, and service members of the Family Service of South Carolina, as well as informing and educating the public around state and local leaders and veterans on matters pertinent to veterans. We have four, we have four, we call regional integrator officers, and these basically are the counties that they represent. Summit County is represented by yours truly, Ms. Jay Berkeley, which she will speak on air.
So the regional integration officers for Summit County and all of the surrounding counties in PD, which I have 12 that I'm responsible for. My main role involves making sure that any services or agencies that cater to the veterans of South Carolina, specifically in my area, I'm aware of, I'm aware of the services that they offer, and I make sure that the veterans in those areas are aware as well. At the South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs, we have other programs that cater to the veterans of our state. We have an employment coordinator, Al Taylor. We have a women and minority coordinator, Heather Durant McEedy. Clay Washington is our housing coordinator. Our health and promotions coordinator is Carrie Massey Shane, and our veteran justice treatment coordinator is still being filled at this current time. Coming up in the county of Sumter, we do have a veterans-focused employment job fair that'll be coming up. It's going to take place on two dates, it's March 8th and March 9th. On March 8th, the portion of that job fair is going to be held virtually, and on March 9th, it's going to take place here in Sumter from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. With 50-plus companies that are going to be represented during that day to hire veterans and their families. Our women and minority program, Outfit Engagement, has upcoming opportunities that are going to be taking place across the state as well. On March the 12th, we'll be holding a workshop in Greenville. On April 30th, we'll be holding a workshop in Columbia. And on May 28th, we'll be holding a workshop in the PD, which is in Monroe Beach. As a housing coordinator, these are some of our partners that we actually work with to actually get our housing for veterans, and this includes a lot of the homelessness, which we now introduce back off.
Thank you, Clay and Jay. Mr. Chairman, council members, community members, thank you for allowing us to briefly provide you an overview of our agency. My name is Dr. Anne Galloway. I go by Anne, and I serve as Chief Innovation Officer with Eastern Carolina Housing Organization. We just go by IGO for short. So ultimately, what our agency does is we look to create opportunities for folks in our community who are experiencing the housing crisis to find a place to call home. We do that by working to break the cycles of homelessness for individuals and families in our community, and we do that by our housing programs. Said simply, we work... Claye Washington is our housing coordinator. Our health and promotions coordinator is Carrie Massey Shane. And our veteran justice treatment coordinator is still being filled at this time. Coming up in the county of Sumter, we do have a veterans-focused employment job fair that'll be coming up. It's going to take place on two dates, it's March eighth and March ninth. On March eighth, the portion of that job fair is going to be held virtually. And on March ninth, it's going to take place here in Sumter from ten a.m. to four p.m. With fifty-plus companies that are going to be represented during that day to hire veterans and their families. Our women and minority program, Outfit Engagement, has upcoming opportunities that are going to be taking place across the state as well. On March the twelfth, we'll be holding a workshop in Greenville. On April thirtieth, we'll be holding a workshop in Columbia. And on May twenty-eighth, we'll be holding a workshop in the PD, which is in Monroe Beach.
As a housing coordinator, these are some of our partners that we actually work with to actually get our housing for veterans. And this includes a lot of the homelessness, which we now introduce Echo.
Thank you, Claye and Jay. Mr. Chairman, council members, community members, thank you for allowing us to briefly provide you an overview of our agency. My name is Dr. Anne Gally. I go by Anne, and I serve as chief innovation officer with Eastern Carolina Housing Organization. We just go by IBO for short. So ultimately, what our agency does is we look to create opportunities for folks in our community who are experiencing the housing crisis to find a place to call home. We do that by working to break the cycles of homelessness for individuals and families in our community. And we do that by our housing programs. Said simply, we work to provide housing for folks who are homeless or who are at risk of homelessness. If you remember nothing else this evening, and we have left some of our cards, if you, any of your constituents or community members know of somebody who may be experiencing homelessness or at risk, please reach out to us and we will do what we can to help. We have a phone number and also can access our website. So what do we do and how do people access the resources that we have? They come through what's called our coordinated entry system. As we all know, in the world of the Department of Housing and Urban Development and federal programs, we have a lot of complex terminology and nuanced language. So said simply, we serve as the access point or an open door that is equitable, standardized, where anybody in our community is experiencing homelessness can be able to call, reach out, and to be able to be placed on a priority list. And we look at being good stewards of the dollars and the funding we have to prioritize based on those who are most vulnerable and are at higher risk and need. Unfortunately, we all know within our community that the need exceeds the current resources that we have. That is why we partner with other agencies and organizations like the South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs. Here in Sumter, we work with Sumter United Ministries, YWCA, and some other organizations. And we're looking to grow our presence and relationships with the local faith community, private businesses, other nonprofits, and governments as well, to be able to work together and increase the impact. So we do this through our housing programs. And our housing programs are not always immediate because the need is great. But what we do is we help for someone to be able to identify and find housing that a landlord will work with them while providing financial assistance. We support them with case management so that they can work towards stability and being able to be independent. We also have what's called crisis beds or transitional housing programs, specifically for veterans of dealing with substance use disorder and domestic violence as well. This is where honestly I could talk three hours for over an hour, but I'm going to keep this part simple. And if anybody is interested in learning more about those programs, we are happy for you to reach out to us and let us share. One of the things we really wanted to emphasize this evening and we want for the citizens and community members of Sumter to know is that we are here to serve our veterans. We've got an introduction to Matt Whitner. He serves as our veterans outreach worker. And he's going to walk you through quickly what the steps are and share a little bit more about our veterans programs and services that we have.
Thank you, Dr. Gally. Uh, yeah, as she said, my name is Matt. Um, I work with veterans in our community and throughout the rural areas here in South Carolina. Uh, right here is just a kind of a step, um, steps of getting permanent housing from a veteran's point of view and how it works. Um, so basically, it starts with outreach and referrals. That's where I come into play, is doing this, engaging the community, talking with agencies, building relationships. And then in turn, they're helping identify those that are homeless or those that may be, uh, at risk of becoming homeless. And so then they refer them to us, either by email, phone call, or, I don't know, have their individual calls themselves. Uh, second step is they're identifying sets. We meet with them, we talk, we see what their housing is, if they're homeless, whether we can or cannot help them. Then we go to step three where we do documentation and eligibility. That's where we're sitting down, actually hammering it out, getting that information as far as military status, homeless status, income, ID verification. And then if it all checks out and approved, then that's where we go on to the important part, the housing search. In that, that's where it begins with our transitional housing program, where they can go, where they can stay, stabilize, and work with our staff, services, and case management to start that housing search. Um, step five, you're housed, congratulations. Um, we get you moved in, we're helping you, we're going to be there. And then that leads to step six, case management. We don't just walk away. Once we get the individual housed, uh, we stay there with them until they're able to stabilize and, um, get a foundation of people. So we don't just walk away and leave them to go right back into the cycle of homelessness. So, yeah. That's just sort of a brief, quick footnote version of what we do, and I appreciate your time.
Yes, and one of the things I would like to say in conclusion is what's important to us is being able to give voice to the folks that we serve and being able to understand. And at our agency Echo, we have maintained from the beginning, half of our staff have lived experience. Some are open, some are not. But it's important to us to be able to understand and to, um, have that lived experience for the folks that we serve. Um, one thing I also wanted to mention is in addition to serving in Sumter, we do serve the entire PD region for a total of thirteen counties plus Kershaw and three in North Carolina for our veterans services. So we hope that we can hear from more of our community members, organizations, private business, and faith community to see how we can work together. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your open arms in the community.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you know Miss Valerie Brunson?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make sure.
Well, if you pointed out her outline away, then that says a lot.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something, but you can say it. Uh, I need services and you can feel that a hopeless. I just want to say thank you and God bless you for what you do.
Thank you for your service and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you also, Matt. A resolution number twenty-two oh one, Mr. Bryant.
Council members of council, um, we're trying to comply with the, uh, ARPA requirement of thirty-one, look, all the money, uh, has been drawn down as bad, and you have attached the resolution. All the funds, uh, all the funds allocated, divided into public health, may affect nothing impact for, 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 for displacement, so forth. Total three million, uh, ten million, three sixty-four thousand, sixty-one, plus up to one hundred thousand dollars for a fire truck for in the Mondeville election. And we, uh, put this up, please.
Any questions, Mr. Bryant? We'll take the motion. We call Rubin, second. The move by Mr. Eads, seconded by Mr. Bird, and we approve resolution twenty-two oh one. It's outlined by Mr. Bryant in the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Resolution twenty-two oh one is approved. Ordinance number twenty-two nine seven one, Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Chairman, in order to meet our marked deadline, we need to have, uh, first reading on our, um, ordinance to establish new electoral districts. So we'll have first reading on title only. In order to establish new electoral districts for the elect in Memphis, South County Council, including the law, United States since twenty-twenty, and implies the section four days, nine minutes, ninety, stockholder will, we'll have a more fully fleshed out, um, plan and ordinance, uh, at the second reading, and then we'll have public hearing on the third reading.
Any questions, Mr. Bryant? We're going to take the motion. Move third reading.
First reading.
First, why?
Title only, second. Yeah.
The move by Mr. Eads, seconded by Mr. Bird. Then we have first reading in title only. Ordinance number twenty-two nine seven one, in the discussion. Hearing none.
Uh, just to let the public know that there will be a public hearing at third reading.
Okay.
What was you saying there?
Yeah, he said it.
Well, just reiterating.
Okay. That's right. Okay, all in favor? Uh, all opposed. Uh, the old business ordinance number twenty-one nine sixty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, twenty-one nine sixty-nine, an ordinance to allow, uh, applicants to apply for loanless loans to expect buildings. The only change since second reading is that any applicant must include in the plan for a spec building with minimum size fifty thousand square feet and magnificent fourth place for building. Anything else of the same.
Any questions, Mr. Bryant? Third reading. Mr. Eads, moves for approval, half second. Second. Move by Mr. Eads, seconded by Mr. Bird, and we have third reading for ordinance number twenty-one nine sixty-nine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, committee reports. The fiscal tax and property committee meeting, uh, was held this afternoon at four-thirty. Uh, your county council received a financial update from our director of finance and audit results, which you heard presented tonight by Mr. Chuck Tallwood. We also have a special meeting, Sumter County Council. A special meeting was held to continue the discussion of the new projects for the new pending progress. Uh, we received this for information only right now. Um, nothing was approved. Come now to report with county council members on other meetings, trainings, and our comments. Mr. Chairman, nothing major comment, please. All opposed. There was one other item that the, uh, hoping. Right, special meeting. There was a special meeting, special. The governor's legislature is coming out with a special, a special meeting to, uh, approve participation in these fellow, in the open reservation. Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to make sure that I don't overlook the members from the South Carolina Department of that. Because I thank you also for what you're doing, and God bless you too. Thank you. Monthly reports, Mr. Bryant.
In council's packet, you should have information concerning the litter advisory board. And that, I think I have already sent you all every monthly report except for the one for September. And I'll get that one to you, um, shortly. Working with the litter advisory board person. The planning commission and the building codes board, um, their minutes and agenda in your packet. And also council members, you're aware that there's going to be a tour and presentation scheduled for Friday, February eighteenth, at the Charles R. Drew Wellness Center in Columbia, South Carolina. I need to know as quickly as possible which members plan to attend so that I can get that to Mr. Washington, um, so we can prepare for that tour. The chamber retreat is this weekend, and those that plan to attend, please be aware of where the location of the conference will be held. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Mr. Mexican County Administrator's report.
No reports, senior, sir.
Thank you. Come now to the public comment. A portion of our general citizens desiring to speak, uh, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, uh, keep your comments to three minutes, and please speak to council booth chairman. And I call the, uh, public comment session open. Anyone wishing to speak to council? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, and thank you, council. First, no, and visitors, thank you. George Bates, I live in Wedsfield. Been here before, be here again, God willing. Uh, I'd like to again bring up the vacant positions in the sheriff's department. Uh, please find the money, fund them, let's get them, let's get their, their equipment. I understand the last count, I believe, was fourteen unfunded or, uh, unfilled positions. Uh, I want to personally thank Mr. Blanding for all the help over the last thirty-some odd years. If you haven't been in office that long, it's what I remember. Uh, thank you for your help. Every time I call, you've taken the time to help me. And I don't think there's enough help given to the staff, same thing, uh, the administrators, uh, council members. Don't forget us after the end. And again, the roads, alright, they brought my attention that, uh, the state owns a lot of these dilapidated, decrepit roads, and county council can't do anything about them. I think maybe county council should be calling the state up and saying, fix the roads. You're in our county. They may be owned by the state, they may be maintained by the state, but we ought to be able to get together and say, fix them. I don't want to go to the state and say fix them. I'm coming to you to help. And, uh, that's all I got, thank you. And y'all have a blessed evening. Be safe.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to council? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, other council members and community members as well. My name is Catherine Washington. No relation to my councilman, officer. I'm here representing the residents of Pastor Rowley in Wedsfield. And I know you've heard that name over the years. Well, we've had many years of numerous efforts of trying to get Pastor Rowley paid. We have thirteen residents that live and have property ownership on this one mile county road. Today I am submitting forms for the project request, twenty-twenty-two capital product sale tax from the residents to get Pastor Rowley paid. I ask you, and I pray to you, to please let's get Pastor Rowley prayed through this request or any other financial grant possible. I thank you for your attention and peace and blessings to all.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Your kin to the last people. Adrian.
Hey, Doc.
To give him then everyone, uh, I will read the brief again. I know I sound like a broken record, but on behalf of the family unit incorporated by the National Freedom Product Careful Organization, we certainly appreciate the fact that the Sumter County Council has allocated funds of fifteen thousand dollars to our office. And we're so happy you're out in Sumter County today, running out of books, out there on Cartney, just helping the ladies. You hadn't had power in your trailer in the back of the trailer for about a year and a half. And now you put up a pole and black rivers out there, so you'll have power to the back of your trailer tomorrow and get some floors and some roofs, and also trailers. And we just thank God, and thank you for allowing us to help people in Sumter County. Uh, that's first thing. Second thing, um, the Manning Avenue Bridge was built nineteen forty. It was built nineteen forty, and it is falling apart, ladies and gentlemen. I drive there cautiously with my cell phone, taking pictures of the crumbling, um, cement and, uh, corroding metal that's fallen from that bridge. I'm actually scared to drive across there. The Sumter Department of Transportation has sent engineers out there, and they're doing some not-so-complete evaluation of the problem. The federal highway administration is dragging its feet. The Sumter Unite, excuse me, the Sumter Urban Area Transportation Stadium, SUEZ, receives two-point-four million dollars from the state and two-point-four million dollars from the federal government every year. And that bridge needs to be, um, replaced. Now, what we're suggesting, and I sound kind of outlandish, but we're suggesting right now that that bridge is closed off to traffic. It is a danger to life itself, going to cross that bridge. Um, and so we ask that the Sumter County, Sumter City Government, and others, please, for God's sake, let us focus attention also on the replacement of that bridge in addition to the revitalization projects that are going on for the North Main Corridor and Manning Avenue. Uh, it's a matter of life and death, ladies and gentlemen. Let's close off the bridge, no traffic, please, on that bridge until such time as we can replace it safely, uh, in the name of safety for our citizens. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Anyone else? Ms. Eads?
I'm Jackie Eads from Sumter. And it seems like it's, uh, proper to come here and ask you to. And it seems like it's proper to come here and ask you to, ask you for favors and such. So I'm asking for y'all to come to the American Legion on seventh of February at six-thirty. Personal invitation to come and see the Police Officer of the Year Award, Sheriff Deputy of the Year Award, Detention Center Officer of the Year Award, EMS, and the Firefighter of the Year Award. So it'll take about an hour of your time if you can come, get a free meal, and personally asking you to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eads. Anyone else wishing to speak to council?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I could take some heaviness off of Ms. Washington's chest and let her know that her road is one of the roads that I submitted to be paid. Just want you to know that.
I appreciate you.
Anyone else? Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Chairman, the movement of the segment, we're adjourned in discussion. And I'm going to be all right, thank you everyone, and be safe.